Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session for Wednesday, August 13th, 2025. It's 10:01 a.m. My name is Ty Mensur, Chair of the Board, Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Vice Chair, Commissioner Rachel Grant, Commissioner Caroline Mejia, participating virtually, and Commissioner Claus is excused at her Orkin Board Meeting. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings. First up is Public Defense. We have their team here, but a couple advisements upfront. Public virtual tenants available on our YouTube channel. Clerk, Madam Clerk, are we live streaming? Okay, so we are live streaming. We had a little bit of technical issues, but meetings that weren't live streamed will be posted later. They get recorded, but it sounds like we're live streaming this one. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. And we have a few items, miscellaneous items on this work session. First up is Public Defense Case Load Standards Implementation. And I'll turn it to County Manager.
Thanks so much. Commissioners, as we get started, this is a really important topic, and I want to give a special thanks to the Public Defense Team for gathering this information together and working collaboratively with the Budget Office on what we have today to present. Some of the information has been fast-moving, so thank you, Patrick, for staying very involved and bringing this forward to the Commissioners as it is an important consideration, not only for the Department and what's taking place through our three public defense into the community, but also how it impacts the county. With that, I'll go ahead and turn over to Commissioner.
Oh, thank you, Leonard, and good morning, Commissioners. Patrick O'Connor, Director of Thurston County Public Defense. I have some of my team with me this morning. I'd like to introduce them, recognize their contributions as well. Katie Venna to my right, who's our Executive Assistant for the Office, and myself, Mia Pagnato, our Fiscal Manager to my left, and Tita Davis, our Administrative Services Manager for the Department. Much of what you're going to see today is the result of a team effort, as Leonard mentioned, not just with our office, but with County Fiscal. So my hope today is to answer any questions. I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions. This is a very complicated issue for not just Thurston County, but counties all over the state of Washington. I know I've briefed the Board more than once in the past on this issue, but going to recap some of the background in the first couple of slides and start to dive into what implementation looks like for Thurston County. So to recap, and of course, Commissioners online, I apologize. I feel I have my back to you. That's a... You might see a raised hand, but I'm sure someone will point out if...
I'll try to grab that for you.
We see a front of your face, so you're good.
Okay. That's the...well, not my best side, but... So just to recap, historically, the state of Washington has had public defense, indigent defense standards since 2012. Our Washington State Bar Association reviewed changes to the standards of indigent defense, primarily looking at caseload capacities for individual defenders to represent individual clients. They made changes to those standards in March of 2025. They went through the legislative process with the Bar Association to fore on those recommendations, the changes. Again, the State Bar Association is our professional association for attorneys in Washington. They recommended very specific changes to the standards for indigent defense, and specifically, I'm going to focus on caseloads in particular, too. So they sent those changes to recommendations to Washington State Supreme Court. Washington State Supreme Court had went through a formal rulemaking process, had two public hearings, one of which was hosted right in this room. And on June 9th of this year, the State Supreme Court issued a specific order effective January 2026. So at the start of next year, the court's order was very specific as it applies to indigent defense and caseloads for public defenders starting next year. So essentially, the order directs counties, all counties in Washington, to come into compliance with new caseloads for public defenders in a maximum of a 10-year period with a minimum of a 10% reduction in caseloads starting in 2026. And we'll go over sort of how that impacts specifically Thurston County, but I just want to make sure that if there's any questions about that, that we're clear that this is to go into effect starting next year. And again, the maximum number of years counties have to come into compliance is 10 years and a minimum reduction in caseloads for public defenders of 10% starting next year with an annual 10%, a minimum 10% for the following 10 years. And that's to get to ultimately what I'll highlight here in a second of the final caseloads per the order. Turning to next slide, which is page three. The court, in their order, did not adopt specific mandatory methods of case counting to get into compliance. Some counties like ours have some case weighting policies currently under the current court rules for indigent defense, which allow for case weighting. Just to put that in context, that's weighting cases based on the severity of the cases. So for example, for about eight years, we've weighted certain cases like Class A, most serious cases, homicide cases, et cetera, with a specific number of attorney hours. Grossly inadequate, by the way. We only awarded our indigent defenders about 36 hours, 37 hours of total time on a homicide from meeting their client through trial. So we've made those adjustments, but clearly not significant, not significantly enough and not anywhere near to being in compliance with the new rules. The court recognized this, and our Washington State Bar Association did as well in adopting the new standards, that cases, depending on complexity, present many, many, many more hours than have currently been provided credit for the defenders doing the work. But at a minimum, it's the third bullet point, so case weighting must comply with the current rule. So if no case weighting system is adopted, the maximum caseload is the actual number of cases referenced for each type of case. And we don't want to get too far into the weeds because it is pretty laid out in the Washington State Bar Association adoption of case credits and weighting. Happy to follow up if there are more specific questions about that. We'll turn to the next slide. So really, the bottom line is implementation efforts for all counties in the state of Washington must begin starting next year. Full implementation must be completed as soon as reasonably possible, but no later than 10 years from starting next year. It can't be deferred. This is a, excuse me, a binding court order from our Supreme Court to indigent defenders. So specifically here in Thurston County, those are my trial attorneys doing the work. They have an order from the Supreme Court, and I have to follow it in terms of assigning them cases and make sure that no attorney in my office is receiving cases that are not in compliance with the State Supreme Court order.
Patrick, can I just jump in real quick?
Sure.
So when you say next year, that's in four months.
Correct. Yeah. January 2026. And we'll start to get into what that looks like for us. But again, we have to start to have a plan and a strategy, and that's really why I'm here today, is to have this conversation about a strategy for Thurston County to comply with that order. And there's a myriad of paths to get there, all of which are complicated and expensive, to be candid. But we have to comply with the order, and I, in my role as a director, have to make sure that this county stays in compliance. Okay. Yeah, and full implementation can be met in any chosen timeframe. So I've had the pleasure of serving as the President of the Washington Defender Association last year while these decisions were being made, and then on to this year. So a lot of meetings, some colleagues around the state on implementation. And I'll just be candid, every county in the state and every peer of mine, you know, is faced with different challenges and different implementation strategies and different circumstances that are local to them, right? So it really is a different playing field all over the state with a lot of different factors. So there's not one specific formula or strategy, you know, that everybody's taking to try to get this done. But the, again, you know, and the court was clear that they plan on revisiting and taking a look at this order in the next several years. But, you know, that's sort of out there without any clear direction, so I can't use that as a guideline as to when we can revisit these per Supreme Court order. So I will move to the next slide, which is, again, just a review of the changes, and you can start to appreciate the significance of the changes. Current standards in Washington 2012, and I'm dating myself because I was part of the time study back in 2007 when they did these to create the current rules. But the current standards are no more than 150 felony clients per public defender in a given year. Again, that's crediting them about 12 and a half hour worth of work per case, and that's from "Hi, I'm your lawyer. It's nice to meet you" through trial. So again, the court recognized, and we had a good sense that the court was going to make these changes because of how insufficient of time that is. 400 misdemeanors, that's about four and a half hours per client. Again, that's "Nice to meet you" through trial. 250 kids, youth cases, and 250 civil commitment cases. Those are our ITA cases. The revised Washington State Bar Association annual caseloads, which again, the Washington State Bar Association guidelines are guidelines. They are not necessarily binding on counties to comply. The court order and the court's decision is binding on counties, and they're directing counties to come into compliance with the Washington State Bar Association's guidelines for indigent defense in that 10-year, no more than 10-year period, starting with a reduction in 10%. So that is an obligation that we have as a county. And the goal within that 10-year period is to get to a maximum caseload of 47 felonies, a maximum caseload of 120 misdemeanor cases, 47 youth felony cases, 120 misdemeanor youth cases, and 250 civil commitment cases. So you can see the big difference in the maximum number of cases a public defender can have in a given year, again, with a drawdown of a minimum 10% of current caseloads starting next year, four months in 2026, and no greater than 10 years to come into full compliance. Trying to pause for a second and see if I have any questions. Okay.
I do have a couple of questions, but I...do you want us to do it now or wait till the end?
I'm happy to...Commissioner, take questions now, however you guys would prefer. Go ahead.
I apologize, Chair. I just jumped in. Can I go?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, my first question is, so just based on this, I thought that we had kind of like a period of waiting, and then just hearing from you, it's an immediate start. So we don't have like a ramp up. Basically, it's the 10 years is the ramp up that they're giving us.
That's correct, Commissioner. 10 years is the maximum a county can wait to come into full compliance. But a minimum of 10% reduction in cases to get to, for example, on this slide, 47 felonies a year, a minimum 10% reduction in caseloads to get to those 47 cases starts Jan. 1 of 2026. And that's, the 10-year period sets out the maximum outlier for counties to come into compliance.
Commissioner, I would say that the next couple of slides talk about the how to implement, which might answer your question better.
Yeah.
No, no, that was my question. Yeah, I know the steps on how we're going to get there is coming up next. I just wanted to like be sure that there wasn't a period of waiting. My next question is in regards to like where are we at compared to where, like where are we at now? Are we at the, basically, our public defenders are at that max period, like?
So I'm going to go over that, Commissioner, in a second, but it depends on the discipline, depends on the types of cases. And so our projections are based on two, two and a half years' worth of cases that we've received from the court. The composition of those cases, whether they're adult felonies, whether they're adult misdemeanors, whether they're juvenile cases, it's a little bit different. So in some areas, we're in pretty good shape, and other areas, we're not. In other areas, we're going to be impacted starting in 2026. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and move to the next slide. So our process here, I just touched on it a second ago, was, you know, we had to look at the case compositions, that number of clients, types of cases that we received over the past two, two and a half years, to reevaluate their weight based on the new standards. So for example, cases that are incredibly serious, like a homicide, a serious sexual assault case, as I referenced earlier, you know, we weighed those cases at about 36 hours of attorney time. The new standards are three times that in terms of hours of attorney credit to defend a case like that. So we had to go through a lot of work to do case conversions on what it would look like for us in 2026 and years beyond to get into compliance with those maximum number of caseloads that the last slide referenced, year to year. And again, we're using a two-year period to do a projection. So I want to be clear that that's really our starting point for trying to get a projection to come into compliance to start next year. As you guys know, the criminal justice system is dynamic, right? Things change year to year. Number of cases, number of types of cases is very dynamic. It changes year to year.
So a quick question on, like, in terms of these, like when you're doing hour calculation, I mean, is that a recognition that it's just an average?
Correct.
You know, because for me, and I know I'm a little bit of an over-prepared, but like, for me, like a case that goes to trial, spending like 10 times the hours than I have a case that, most cases that don't go to trial. So, and I know, you know, everyone has a right to go to trial, and you can't really control... control what that rate is, but, you know, if you're calculating over, I guess you're just looking at the aggregate and saying, including the cases that are going to be hundreds of hours of trial versus, or, you know, dozens and dozens of hours versus, you know, 10 hours or whatever, typical investigation and negotiation of a plea agreement, you're just kind of taking, taking an average.
Correct. Yes, these are based on...
I just want to point that out because it's like, because people that haven't, you know, done the work, they may think that number is like a little bit odd. And it is a little bit odd because cases are vastly different. So this is just an average, looking at an aggregate number of cases.
Correct. Yeah, it's, it is an average, looking at the aggregate number of cases, types of cases as well. And then there's all those additional factors, right? So you have local practice habits, discovery. Discovery's changed forever. Body cam footage is now part of discovery. Our attorneys spend, you know, the amount of hours they're currently given credit for, for "nice to meet you through trial," just on watching videos. So the whole landscape is, is changed in terms of the work. And again, you know, these are specific to injured defense because of all the rules of professional conduct that apply for the defender to meet for each and every client. So it's very unique, but those are very specific obligations that the attorney has to perform. And then really, this is just a recognition that that is impossible to, to comply with if you have too many clients. You just can't meet all your ethical obligations. So this next slide, again, methodology. This is based on the past two to two and a half years' worth of cases that have been assigned to our office by composition, and a projection based on, on those assignments to come into compliance within the next 10 years. So based on the number of cases we've been appointed to, we would need 35 defense attorneys, new FTEs to our office, 25 felony attorneys, six misdemeanor attorneys, two juvenile attorneys, and two ITA attorneys. Again, that's in the time period the court has set at the maximum number of years of 10 years, based, again, on two years' worth of appointments. This is dynamic. Be clear, to be candid, I don't want to hire all these attorneys. I don't want to have to add 35 more attorneys. I want to have less clients. I want our attorneys to be in compliance, of course, with the Supreme Court order. So I say this as a projection, and we talk about direction in terms of a plan, that, you know, we're looking at obviously the next biennium, because the next biennium, Jan. 1, 2026, we have to take our first step into compliance with the mandatory minimum 10% reduction in cases. I want to, I'll be candid, I want to, I want us to be in a position in the following biennium to say actually, based on the past biennium assignments, we're able to pivot, and we don't, we're not looking at that many lawyers, but we're going to have to take each year's assignments as one at a time. When you add, when you're looking at this number of defense attorneys, it doesn't just come with, you know, the attorneys, right? You're adding 35 staff attorneys to an office, and there are other compliance with the standards of injured defense that attorneys are fully supported. So fully supported with professional administrative staff, support staff, investigators, which we're still lagging behind current compliance with investigators, fiscal support and management. And when, when I met with county manager and assistant county manager and county financial, we started having these conversations about these projections, and we wanted to present the full implementation expense, right? Because if our office is going to grow with that many number of attorneys, as any organization, as HR would point out, you have to grow in step with professional staff, management staff, et cetera.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On, on this part, right, as we're talking about 35 new defense attorneys, and knowing that we're not going to be the only county that is going to be in this situation, and attorneys are, I mean, they're already on high demand, both from prosecutor's side, from the public defense side, like, how, I'm just, how do we even start recruiting for those pieces and getting attorneys to fill those pieces?
How many applicants did you have for your last vacancy? Like, is there that many candidates floating around?
We have no vacancies, but we had about eight, but...
Just to, to your comment, Commissioner, I think the last point there kind of highlights potential strategy of the timing. Because if the, and this is something that I really appreciate, Patrick informing us from, from a leadership standpoint. You know, we have up to 10 years, but the longer we take, the more the already strained market that you're highlighting will be depleted as talent, folks coming out, there's going to be a huge demand, and the potential for, although I know folks love working in Thurston County, they love a public defense team, award-winning defense team and leader, but there's also poaching going on, very real. Attorneys getting offers like sight unseen, just cold offers out there because of the realization that everyone's going to be in the same demand situation. So it's a really good perspective about part of what we have to wrestle through as we look at how do we move forward.
Yeah, thank you, Leonard, and it's a great question, Commissioner. And for me, recruiting started when the Washington State Bar Association made this announcement. So we've been recruiting based on these changes since last year. But to Leonard's point, it's going to be a hyper-competitive market, as this slide points out. King County and Snohomish County have already announced, King County's been advertising in our, of our news for the last several editions, that they're implementing these new standards in three years, and so is Snohomish County. So, you know, obviously, they're recruiting based on that. Come join us, you'll have the 47 felonies and be compliant with the court order in three years. You don't have to wait.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? Are you concerned that that's going to create vacancies in your department just based on the fact that their, King and Snohomish are going to be having lowered caseloads by three years, and that yet here you are, right, still operating?
We're all worried about that, I'll be candid, in, in public defense in the state of Washington.
That really becomes the question that we're working to balance is, as an employer of choice, getting those employees, the speed of the ramp up, balancing that with the budget realities is really what the nut of a question is coming.
It's, it's going to be challenging, not just for us, but for other agencies as well. They have, they have not been very popular, to be candid, with some of my colleagues because of the marketplace and the competitiveness of it. You know, I've had at least three of my trial attorneys reach out to me that, you know, they've been recruited by King County through LinkedIn to join, they've turned them down. But it's just a hyper-competitive market like other markets. But we have a lot of competitive edges, and our recruiting efforts are ongoing, a great pool of summer interns that hopefully want to graduate and come back and start working here. So, but we're going to have to, we're going to have to up our game on recruitment as well.
What we say with a little bit of humor, but it's, it's a reality. Our public defense is an award-winning organization because of Patrick's leadership and the team members within it. And so that, that is a competitive edge, and continuing to have that type of organization here is really going to be part of the mix of how we address this. So thank you to you and your team for your great work.
Yeah, it's, it's, thank you, Josh. One other key component here, and I can't stress this enough, is we're looking at potential additions, right, and positions to our office. What we fight on a daily basis is retention, 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 retention. And defenders in my office have been hanging on for a number of years, but specifically with the promise of a reduced caseload, a better work-life balance, and more that they can do for each and every client, this is also an unbelievably valuable retention tool as well. And we've lost probably 10 attorneys in the past three to five years. My exit interviews, their number one reason for leaving wasn't culture, morale, pay, it was caseloads. And I've stayed in touch with every one of them, especially after this announcement to, again, another recruitment effort, but it's going to be challenging.
Let's get to your recommendation.
Yeah, great. So I just want to throw out real quick, the state of public defense is, this is before the caseload standards, just dealing with the workforce shortage, has worked on some programs to try to, like, academy and outreach and training and, you know, probably not insufficient, but there's been recognition of this issue and an effort to try to create a greater pool of...
Yeah. Great partnership with them. And when we go to law schools to recruit, we get a lot of attention at our, at our booths. A common question is, you know, I've heard the caseloads are crushing for public defense. So, you know, when we go to the next UW Career Day, Public Service Career Day, which is coming up, this is an incredible recruitment tool as well.
As this, what the state is doing, I know is putting pressure on us here locally, but the fact that they're doing it creates a awareness that as we try to recruit even nationally, folks may want to gravitate toward a system where there are caseload standards and they know what to count on. So, speaking, my experience coming from California, not even having that.
Yeah.
Oftentimes, folks are looking at...
Maybe that'll increase our, our out-of-state recruitments.
Right, and when you manage that with the quality of life up here, and there's a lot to offer.
Can't agree more. We've hired at least three attorneys off the top of my head in the past couple of years from out of state. This is news that is in national, national headlines for public defenders, so completely agree. Okay, I want to move, I don't know when we're done, so I'm assuming 11, so I'm keeping moving quick. So what we vetted and have reviewed with, with Josh Leonard and the financial team is a couple of different models for implementation. Again, we're following what I just highlighted, that some counties are going with a three-year, three-year implementation plan. Again, not all counties are created equal, so there are different circumstances in King and Snohomish and other counties that may put them in a better position to do that than, than Thurston. We are recommending that the board consider a five-year implementation to get us into compliance. We have a proposal coming up about what it would take for us to get into compliance, again, based on our current projections of caseloads, which are always going to be subject to change and review. And then we'll show you what a 10-year model, and the 10-year model is the maximum number of allowable years a county could take to get into compliance. And I'd like to see us be better than, if possible, than a 10-year implementation plan. I'm completely understanding the constraints that the county is facing, and that's why I'm not making a recommendation that we compete with King and Snohomish County, and I take out an advertisement in the bar news that we're doing a three-year implementation plan. I, I completely understand where the county is, or maybe not completely, because I'm not the fiscal expert, but I, I've seen the writing on the wall, so I, I understand that. So what I'm recommending is, I think, a reasonable plan, but also one that keeps us market competitive. So, again, this modeling is based on two years' worth of data. We could look at, we're going to look at a first step in the next biennium in both plans, a five-year plan and a 10-year plan. But I do think the best approach here is to take this biennium by biennium, but choosing a path that can be altered biennium by biennium based on workloads. And I'm hoping those workloads decrease. I'm hoping that our projection now for a five-year and 10-year is high because caseloads have decreased. So we'll go to the next slide. So this is where we start to get into projection numbers for compliance with the new court order, starting in 2026, on two different paths. The path on the left is a five-year, excuse me, implementation plan to become compliant. As you go left to right, in 2026, you would see seven attorneys, two legal support, one investigator, and no other positions. And in 2027, for the next biennium, that's an additional seven FTE attorney positions, two legal support positions, and investigators, and so on and so forth. To get to that, again, current projection based on two years' worth of data to come into compliance with the court order, 10% reduction in caseloads year after year until you come into compliance in a maximum 10 years. Oh, I've done that. Okay. So on the right is a 10-year, is a 10-year compliance model. So again, that's the outlier, maximum number of years to get into compliance, year by year with additional FTEs. Again, we highlight that because it is the full package of expenses, so it's not just lawyers and cases. It's what's it going to take for, if you add seven lawyers, do you need any support staff to support that lawyer? Well, of course you would. And that's baked into the projection numbers as well. We keep moving along because I'm up against it a little bit, but we'll...
To that point, you could not operate just by adding 35 lawyers.
No.
So I, what I want to just thank you and your team is for the comprehensive approach. Because at high level, just to price out 35 lawyers, and then for there to be the other costs that we have to then talk about separate, doesn't make sense in the conversation. In order to run the business of 35 more lawyers, this is the infrastructure that is needed with other additional support in the office.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's everything from supervision, the lawyers have to be supervised, supported, they have to have management support, direct daily support, management support, et cetera.
Is one lawyer, one investigator per seven attorneys your ratio right now?
We have three for 25. So the standards would say we need one per four, we have one per eight.
One per four?
Yes.
That's interesting. I was just going to say, like, I worked in an office where it was one per five, and it wasn't, it was almost enough, but not, it wasn't enough. And I would say one per three or four is really the right number, so it sounds like I'm right on point there.
You're right on point with the standard recommendations. We're just, we're not there yet.
And as Patrick keeps moving, which I appreciate, I want to just say that Patrick is not being, on the scale of one in, one in the world or being very modest, he's on this side of being pretty modest. And I, I appreciate his sensitivity to the fiscal condition of the county. And he is, from my perspective, in the conversations and emails, he's wrestled with the fact of the timing and where we are at. So I just want to state that, because I know that, being a modest person, he wouldn't state that for himself. I'm a pretty modest person, and, and he's, I'm asking for the minimal requirements to get this done, but that is definitely what we've seen, and I think the budget office has seen as well. This is not a situation where you ask for the world, and then we spend time dialing that back. It was a very understandable and modest approach to run in the office, so thank you.
Thank you, Leonard.
And I'll stop holding you up.
No worries. So I want to, we'll move to the next slide. Walks through costs and cost projections. And we really want to thank TIP West with Summer's team, we're working with MEA on, on these projections. So again, on the left is a five-year cost implementation model. Again, that's whole costs, as Leonard just pointed out, that's lawyers plus additional support. And those conversations need to be probably ongoing about what it would take for us to get into compliance in the next biennium just for lawyers, given the climate. But this really shows the full implementation expense, and that's why it's been such a, such a big, big decision by our state Supreme Court, and why counties across the state are wrestling with how to implement these changes, primarily fiscally. Because as you know very well, that 98% of public defense is put on municipalities and counties, and I certainly hope that changes. It has to. So implementation expenses, projections in a five-year plan on the left and a 10-year plan on the right. One thing of note on the right, so you can see a 10-year implementation plan forecast, the expenses are much more expensive, based on a number of factors. And again, appreciate TIP's work with MEA on projecting what, what those expenses would be over a 10-year period. And when you look at them, it's more expensive in a 10-year plan. I'll move to the next, I've got two, one minute and 45 seconds remaining, and these guys know I'm a personality professional. So just sort of highlights, again, this slide, what we took into consideration. So all those expenses that you're seeing include these items here. There's some unknown cap, cost, capital, cost for space, contract attorney cost, which is a whole nother bailiwick that I didn't want to present today, but as part of our implementation, we have to pay our contract attorneys to do conflict representation, and there are other, some other departmental impacts that aren't necessarily calculated into those projections. I'll move to the next slide.
So, that's actually important. Let's stop there for a sec. So, you need the lawyers for the caseload, you need the support for the lawyers, and then you need the county support. So, IT, facilities, HR, all those employees need support also.
Right. Yeah. And I do want to point out one thing on the salary and benefits for that last projection. It's, they are projected at the ma, at the, at the maximum salary amount. So, that's not going to be the case. Not every new hire is going to come in at the maximum based on number of years of experience. So, that's an outlier of the hire expense that we wanted to point out. This is another slide, walks through, really for the biennium decision-making packet. So, we submitted our, our budget change request as a placeholder based on the five-year implementation model that I've just reviewed. It's just a placeholder only. Obviously, there's going to be ongoing conversations when it comes down to budget discussions and budget decisions and you as the board deciding, making those decisions. But within mind, what sort of strategy do we want to take to implement these standards? And see, up against the clock here, the next slide highlights again, while we're recommending a five-year implementation model, it ensures faster compliance, provides more relief to our staff in a shorter amount of time, keeps us market competitive. And as you can see, the longer we take to implement, the actually, the more expensive based on the projections from county fiscal over time. So, I think I'm going to close here. That's a lot of information, a lot of big numbers. And I appreciate Leonard's comments there. This is not the best of times to be making these changes. But I, from a, from a budget perspective, from a public defender and a director of a county office, there's been no better time to implement these long overdue changes to our practice, to our staff, most importantly, if equally importantly, to our clients. So, with that, I'm going to rest for now and see if there's any questions with the time we have.
Commissioner, we, we know that this is a lot of information and you're going to go through a process of absorption and there may be questions to come up. Patrick and I stand ready as well as the budget team to talk with you offline. And also, if the board feels like they would like to have this presentation or go through aspects of this presentation again in a couple of weeks, we're happy to do that as well.
Commissioner Fornier?
Yeah, thank you. I, I just went and put them in the chat, but I have some specific questions that will probably need time to be worked on and would probably be best answered at the next subsequent meeting. But they're there for anyone to read or Patrick to read and go over. And, but I would imagine they'll, they'll require some time to follow up on.
We'll get those questions, Commissioner Fornier, and send them to Patrick's team.
Yeah, they're really not for everyone to read because we can't see the chat and it's going to go away. I'd like to know what your questions are.
For Patrick, I have four questions. Number, first one, have your, have your caseload projections taken into account recent crime data, showing a 20% decrease in crime in Thurston County? What are your current criteria for determining indigency? Are we following the RCW strictly or do we apply local standards that deviate or go beyond what the statute requires? Do we base our policy on financial screenings or are they mostly paperwork-driven or self-attested? How can we review our indigency practices? And then questions for county manager and staff, is, are we named as plaintiffs in the WSAAC lawsuit? If not, how can Thurston County most effectively support or align with WSAAC's efforts? And then are there, or do we anticipate any specific legislative proposals or budget requests that we should be lobbying for in the 2026 session?
We'll get those questions.
And I'll send it in an email.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
And I can answer, I can help with the WSAAC question.
Go round up on all of those and share them with the complete board, mostly Patrick.
Thank you, Commissioner Fornier. Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything for the team before we, today, before we move to the next topic? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time and look forward to follow up.
Okay, next up is housing team. We have a presentation on the five-year homeless housing plan. Switched over here.
Hello. Jen Freihite, Director of Public Health and Social Services. We are here today to provide an overview of the 2025, 2035-year homeless housing plan process and requirements, a summary of the work completed to date through public and stakeholder engagement, and information that we have gathered to date, and a summary of the tasks left to complete through the end of the year. So, we are here in this process early to request your feedback for plan strategies and tasks. And we would love your perspective and guidance to ensure that we are aligned with the greater county vision and priorities. So, with that, I will turn it over to Tom Webster, our Senior Program Manager for the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention.
Great. Thanks, Jen. All right. So, we're here to talk about the five-year homeless housing plan. This is a requirement of our funding from the Department of Commerce. So, the guidelines come from the Department of Commerce that come with our funding. So, we are currently drafting our plan for the 2025 to 2030 timeframe. And the plans need to align with Department of Commerce guidance. And there's a website with kind of all the details about that. The plan has several requirements that we'll incorporate. The first is an estimate of current service levels. So, what is our current level of services we're providing to our homeless service providers, number of beds, that type of thing. So, we need to provide that estimate. We're doing, documenting all the sources of homeless housing assistance funds and capital projects that our county receives. An estimate of the permanent and emergency housing needs. So, this builds on, we use the, what CPAD and TRPC have been working on under the HB 1220 projections. So, we're incorporating those projections to earn alignment with the, with the plans that are being developed. We need to articulate how we prioritize our homeless housing capital projects. So, this is really a description of the Thurston Affordable Housing Advisory Board process and the National Housing Council. And then documentation of public engagement. So, the Commerce requires a public engagement process that we've been going through. And then really, the core of that plan is a narrative about our system and then a work plan that addresses the strategies and objectives that we're going to work to achieve over the next five years. So, those are the core elements of the plan. And within that, the state requires, has established five objectives that our plan must address. So, we must speak to these five objectives in our plan. So, I'll highlight these now, but Jackie's going to go through these in more detail towards the end of the presentation. So, those are to promote an equitable, accountable, and transparent homeless crisis response system, to strengthen the homeless service provider workforce. This is really a new subject area for the five-year plan. This is not something that in the previous five-year plans focused on the, on workforce. To prevent episodes of homelessness whenever possible. To prioritize assistance based on the greatest barriers to housing stability and the greatest risk of harm. And to seek to house everyone in a stable setting that meets their needs. So, those are the requirements from, from Commerce in terms of our overall plan objectives. In developing this plan, this is really a community plan. Commerce requires us to engage with, with stakeholders. So, we have been engaging with our lived experience housing steering committee since the fall of 2024 to help inform the development of this plan. We've also had a core team of stakeholders that we've been working with also since the fall of '24. Commerce requires that we invite a variety of different types of stakeholders to participate in that process. We've done that. You see the list there. We've had good representation from our homeless service providers who've been participating in this process from the beginning. There's also required public engagement process. Commerce is, requirements are pretty high level. There's a notice of plan and development and a notice of public hearing. So, we will have a public hearing later this fall. There's the 30-day public comment period. So, that's what Commerce requires, but we feel we've really gone above and beyond those requirements. We have issued the, the plan. It's posted on our website in the fall of 2024. But we also sent out a community survey earlier this year. We did two community surveys. One specifically for homeless response system providers for the workforce and another one out to the general public. And within that general public survey, we had a specific section for those with lived experience. So, we received a total of 557 responses from the public. Of those, 94 were folks with lived experience in the past 10 years of homelessness. And then we had 157 responses from our homeless service provider workforce to that survey. We followed up that survey with some listening sessions. So, we went out to, to the tiny home villages to conduct living, listening sessions with those folks living at those projects. We also conducted a listening session with those with lived experience and those with service providers, direct service providers. That really allowed us to dive deeper, following up on those surveys in terms of getting that input. So, we've taken all that input from the, the public and we are working with the core team and our office to really develop the core of the plan. So, right now, next steps where we are, we're working on developing the plan in this month. And in September, beginning of September, we intend to submit a draft of the plan to the Department of Commerce, who has a contractor on board who will review the plan for us to make sure it meets all the required elements. So, it's not a pass fail, but it's, it's making sure we've met all those requirements, required elements. So, we'll get feedback from them. We intend to present the, the plan probably in October for the Regional Housing Council and then bring it back to the full board for your approval in November. It is due to the Department of Commerce by December of 2025. We will also be publishing it, sorry, probably in September for that 30-day public comment period. So, that's a high-level overview of, of the next steps as we bring the, bring this plan into fruition. But I'm going to turn it over to Jackie, who is our homeless response program manager. She's been with us about six months. I don't know if you've had a chance to hear from her yet. Super excited to have her on our team. She's going to go in a little bit more detail about what we've been hearing from the listening sessions and what we're looking to incorporate into the plan.
Thanks, Tom, and good morning, everybody. If I haven't talked with you before, I am new to the team. And so, thank you for letting me crash and share a little more about the plan. It's a pleasure to be here and share. Like Tom mentioned, sort of, I think we're cruising on the sort of the dot in the eyes and crossing the t's of the plan. We're not losing sleep over all those required elements. I think the real meat and potatoes of the conversation is the elements of the plan itself. We don't want a checkbox plan. We want a plan that is by our community for our community that really addresses sort of the overall picture of unchildrened homelessness all the way through stable, affordable housing in Thurston County. I think, like Tom mentioned, we have gone above and beyond with public engagement to really get feedback that matters. And of course, that's the context why we're bringing it to you all, to make sure that anything we're betting in this plan, you also feel is really reflective of our community needs and county mission, vision values at the heart of that plan as well. So, to get into it, we've organized the plan as objectives, strategies, and tasks. We're going to share the objectives and strategies today to kind of stay out of the weeds just to see if you feel that they are in alignment with what you've heard from constituents and from your perspective. And you'll recognize the objectives from Tom's slide earlier, that those are, that's the verbiage from Commerce that they would like us to focus on. And the strategies within those are what our team has come up with based on that community engagement with our lived experience housing steering committee, those listening sessions, direct service providers, our core team, and hopefully you all as well. So, objective one is to promote an equitable, accountable, and transparent homeless, homeless crisis response system. And the strategies we're hoping to focus on are to strengthen transparency through shared information and cross-system collaboration, to enhance accountability through measurable coordination and continuous improvement, and to advance equitability by continuously monitoring, evaluating, and thoughtfully redesigning access and partnerships to prioritize underserved populations. Feedback we received under that objective was to really focus on data-driven services and utilize all available information that we track through the homeless response system to inform next steps around equity and then making that data transparent, available, and clear to community members so folks know what to expect from the system in terms of wait times or what's available or who we're missing that we should be incorporating better. Objective two is to strengthen the homeless service provider workforce. And I'm not sure if you mentioned before, this component hasn't been a part of previous five-year plans. So, this was new and we are really excited to see this come online because high turnover in direct service staff especially, and our service providers really affect system function and the experience for participants trying to access help. And we got tremendous feedback. Folks showed up really to answer this question from our provider network. So, some of the strategies we identified based on that feedback was to foster collaborative learning and knowledge sharing. Folks felt like they knew a lot within their own organization, organizations, but felt a little siloed and separate from the system as a whole. So, really to turn to a fo, a system focus rather than an organizational focus. To enhance provider capacity through technical support and resource navigation along the same lines. And then to promote system alignment and workforce retention. And really get creative about how with limited resources, we can incentivize folks to want to enter and stay in the field. Objective three is to prevent episodes of homelessness wherever possible. We don't want a system that feels like a merry-go-round. We want to make sure that if we find a housing solution for someone, that that's permanent. And so, strategies under this objective would be to optimize and coordinate existing prevention resources, which are part currently of our homeless response system, and to think about how to leverage those against other resources, just not to operate with what we have, but to expand as well. To enhance system flexibility through policy review and adjustment, to strengthen early identification and intervention practices. Because the further upstream we can intervene and support, the better the outcomes and often the lower the cost. So, a win-win in that sense. And then to build and sustain strong landlord partnerships. We heard a major call from folks across the board on really working to engage direct landlords. We've got lots of focus through capital projects for building permanent supportive housing or affordable units that are set aside through housing vouchers or something similar or subsidy programs. But really, folks wanted to focus on engaging directly with market rate landlords and talking about what community-integrated housing opportunities might look like if folks had the right level of support to maintain that through case management subsidies or something similar. Objective four is to prioritize assistance based on the greatest barriers to housing stability and the greatest risk of harm. This harkens back to the equity component of objective one that we were going over. But some specific strategies here we'd like to consider are to implement a consistent and equity-informed prioritization framework. That's already something embedded in our system that gets reviewed annually to adapt to what we're learning might need to be changed. But to really think about that critically and make sure it's really supporting our system as equitably as it deserves to be observed. To strengthen identification and assessment of high-risk and underserved populations and really lean into that data focus for what our system is reflecting as who's present in the homeless response system next to county-wide data, next to citywide data, and make sure that we're really on target for reaching folks that we might be missing otherwise. And then to expand and align pathways for immediate safety and stabilization. We have heard a community call for emergency shelter as an undermet need. So, creativity around considering that and bolstering that. And then the final objective, objective five, is to seek to house everyone in a stable setting that meets their needs. So, we'd like to consider strategies that are maintain and expand housing and sheltering options with flexibility and choice. There's a full spectrum of different types of housing that have different eligibility or barrier or higher or lower barrier access points. So, considering sort of a broad spectrum of available, available resources within that continuum. To maximize resources to expand housing access by leveraging all available resources to increase access. That strategy has a major stakeholder engagement consideration because we've got some heavy hitters in our homeless response system that have been major players for a long time. And we're hoping to see how maybe we can leverage resources across sort of under-engaged stakeholders in healthcare, or how we can better engage behavioral health, how we can better engage workforce and economic development, and some opportunities within that. And then we'd like to leverage system coordination to expand housing access, improve housing stability through protections, supports, and quality standards. The community feedback that really influenced that one was from our lived experience housing steering committee and our listening sessions around folks who would like to know more about tenant protection. And then even when they do know a lot about those things, their experience has not reflected what they felt their rights were. And so, to really lean into considering policy and conversations around housing quality. And so to really lean into considering policy and conversations around housing quality standards and how we can set the bar high on things like that. And then to advocate for systems and policy changes that sustain housing stability. Our system has historically done really well helping people get into housing. And then that long-term support where folks could be stably housed if they had the right level of support ongoing, whether that's in supported housing or in a community-integrated setting, to think about what those long-term supports might look like and how we could incorporate that into system funding priorities and operations. So I'm almost done, I promise. This is so many words and you're being very patient. But all of those objectives kind of paint the picture of a full spectrum, like continuum of resources within the homeless response system. And we're also operating in a reality where we're looking at a changing landscape for funding and we always are predicting to the best degree possible what that might look like. But it is true that within a full-spectrum system, we might need to make some tough choices about where to prioritize funds and how to think about doing that in alignment with what we're hoping this document can be, which is our North Star for setting those priorities early so that when a question does come up, we don't have to wonder. We already know where we wanted to prioritize. So some suggested priorities within that plan, funding contingent or where to focus available time and energy first would be to start by maintaining the existing homeless response system and to do our best not to let the existing service level wane from what has been built. To improve the effectiveness of the homeless response system through improved coordination and data tracking and analysis and leveraging existing non-housing-specific resources, so leaning into those partners and how we can all work with one another, leverage and help things stretch. As resources allow, to expand the capacity of the homeless response system in a way that creates and enhances multiple pathways to permanent housing, to make sure that people have sort of a menu of options for whatever their housing situation is, whether that's from unsheltered housing, straight into permanent housing, if perhaps a different pathway is available to them through recovery housing or temporary housing, to know that they have a wide menu of options available. And then to use existing capital resources to create new affordable housing units throughout Thurston County across a range of housing types, just to increase stock of available units to have, to work with.
All right.
Thank you. Did I miss anything that felt important, Tom?
No. So that's where we're at. So we are working on this plan, hoping to have this drafted by the next couple of weeks. But would really appreciate your feedback as we are developing this plan to make sure it meets your, your needs and desires.
As our commitment to gain the information to you before, it goes through process. So this is a, it's being worked on. It's going to start hitting key stakeholder groups like the Regional Housing Council. And so again, if there's questions you have or if there's any information that we can provide either right now or offline, we're happy to coordinate and connect with each, each and every one of you.
Mr. Graham.
Hey there. Hi. I just wanted to give some feedback, just to say that that was a really great presentation, extremely well thought out and well put together. And, and I haven't met you yet, but welcome to Thurston County and to the team. And, and I look forward to, to working with you going forward. So nice job on that.
Thank you.
Of course.
Mr. Fournier.
Yeah, I want to say thank you as well. And I, my question, I think you, you answered it towards the end. It was like, you know, I really wanted to know where the piece was that was talking about like fiscally responsible practices and making sure that the capital assets that we have are supported before we go out looking for new ones. And I, I heard that in, in the end, and I just wanted to make sure it's understood. That's really important to me. I don't think, you know, we're not going to create housing stability by creating projects that are not stable and every year they're in the newspaper about not having funding. So it's, it's really key and it's really important to me to make sure that we're backing up the things that we have with the operations, you know, to be able to support them.
Great, thank you.
I had a question, like the, so the Department of Commerce can, you know, sign off on the plan or not, but let's say they sign off on the plan, then is there anything like on the backend about how they monitor what we're doing? And the reason I ask is, I mean, a lot of this, a lot of these strategies, they're on point, but like they're kind of vague, right? Like in terms of what they, and so how does anyone really track that we're kind of aligning this and coordinating with that? I mean, they're not framed in terms of like really specific SMART goal metrics. So is there any sort of backend, like feedback you get from Commerce, like, or is it just kind of, they just want to make sure that you're oriented in the right direction and then it's kind of up to us?
Yeah, so there will be tasks that get developed that have those SMART goals kind of built in.
Oh, you're saying that's kind of the next level.
That's kind of the next level that we'll get into. So that will be there. And then we have an annual reporting requirement to Commerce every year. So we report on progress to the plan. So there is an element of, of annual reporting.
And, and can you just give an example of like what a task would look like, how it would be framed? Just an example, like.
So each task is broken down into what the task is, which strategy it relates back to, the responsible party, what the goals are in accomplishing that, and then the timeline by which we hope to have it accomplished. And so an example of a task, to come back to how direct service providers were really hoping to de-silo and connect more with one another, a task might be county assistance and helping them understand how to set formal MOUs for referral processes or those kinds of things. And then the responsible parties would be the providers, technical assistants from OHHP, which is our office. And we would hope to have that completed within the first year of the five-year plans so that we could achieve that goal quickly so that hopefully through that improved collaboration, outcomes also. Is that sort of a, an example that you were, that helps you understand?
And you have to like provide an annual report back of like how we're doing all these different things, like showing.
Try progress.
Things that we've done that would meet with those goals.
What Tom explained to me, Commissioner Minster, was that this plan is important for us to receive the funding from Commerce so that they understand we have a framework by which we're directing our activities and they're not just out in left and right field, not making real sense to trying to move things forward.
Yeah, this document really serves as a North Star for the Regional Housing Council as we're setting priorities for our annual request for proposal process. And as we're making funding awards, the Homeless Services Advisory Board uses this to help set, okay, what are the priorities for this specific year? But everything that we fund needs to fit within this five-year plan. So this should really drive kind of all the funding decisions that come out of the Regional Housing Council.
Thank you. Other questions?
I'm sending my questions via mouse.
Thank you, Matt. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, you all, very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Jack. You're great, y'all.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is a budget update. For extra items. Paul.
I do have a question.
Hi, Josh. Commissioners? Morning.
This is another installment of our continued conversation as we apply the context of where the budget situation is. And I'll hand over to Summer, introduce her team.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Summer Miller, Budget and Finance Manager in the Commissioners' Office. We've switched up our seating arrangement a little bit today. To the left, you need Jennifer Smith. To the right is Karen Chen, who is now midway through her second week with us. Tiff West and Dolly Alphensekka is with us. And we are bringing back a budget update for general fund deficit overview. This is our sixth presentation of the year, I believe. I think we were just here a week ago, I think. So we have a couple of objectives today. The first being that at the end of the presentation, we would request a board motion to approve the revised 2026, 2027 budget development calendar, incorporating amendments related to the 2025 fiscal year. We also intend to deliver an update on the current status of Thurston County's general fund, including key financial indicators and trends. We'll explain contributing factors and decisions that have shaped the fund's present condition and outline strategic plans and projections for the general fund's future, highlighting priorities, challenges, and opportunities. So a budget overview. In a 2022, I would say we had a strategic budgeting shift. The board adopted an expenditure budget that exceeded projected revenues, which in my opinion marked a deliberate shift in fiscal strategies, budgeting strategies. In 2022, that same year, there was an exceptional underspend despite the higher expenditure budget. Actual spending in 2022 came in significantly lower than projections due to a high reversion rate. In 2023 through 2025, expenditures consistently exceeded revenues, resulting in a year-over-year decline in the general fund balance. This created a structural deficit and it necessitated the use of fund balance reserves to backfill ongoing expenses.
Part of that, of course, all of you know, as you saw the chart, it's because there was an infusion of a ton of one-time money that came into the county and the fiscal and economic uncertainty coming out of the pandemic. What was going to happen? The economists were charting that things were going to drop suddenly. And when there was infusion in stimulus money into the economy, it didn't quite perform the way anybody thought. So those, that timeframe is probably one of the key uncertain timeframes in not only across locally here, but across the nation.
Thank you. So our current budget gap in 2025, as of Amendment Two, 2025 adopted expenditure budget exceeds anticipated revenues by approximately $22 million, underscoring the need for strategic financial planning. And below that, you can see what the actual revenues and expenditures were 22, 23, and 24, keeping in mind that 2024 is still not closed out through financial services. But those numbers should be fairly close and then your adopted budgets without any assumptions added in. That is your revenue budget and your expenditure budget. This is a visual aid to help digest the information on the prior slide. This shows in green your revenues. Here over here, your expenditures are in the pink or salmon color. The total dollar amount is indicated above. The years of 22 through 24 are actuals with the structural deficit figure superimposed. And on 2025, these figures do not match the prior slide because this is showing you my estimations on revenues at this point in time. And the expected expenditures after the next amendment is adopted to incorporate the collective bargaining agreements that have been ratified and potentially one other still to be finalized item through executive session and then formal decision outside of that. So taking those considerations into the model.
And board, our, our concern on the visual is with revenue performing the way it is, that's exasperating the current situation, other things being forced onto the county that we don't really have any choice. I mean, similar to the presentation we just heard today about the case load standards. It's not the county's desire to go and initiate those additional expenses. We have to. And I'm leaving the value of it aside. I'm just saying about the, the dollars and cents of it. So when you look at that, when we built the 24, 25 budget in 23, there was no way we could understand that revenues were going to underperform the way they did in 24 and then in 25. And that really creates the drag on what should be an increasing number. You know, we went from 116 to 120, good news. 120 to 129, good news. And faltering to 125, bad news. And no matter how much fund balance we have, and I know that there's been a lot of conversation about the fund balance, the fact remains, if we spend more than we're bringing in, the fund balance is going to be depleted eventually in the out years unless we right-size the spending with the revenue. Our challenge is, and what we're hearing both from the state and other economic indicators, is the growth back is very flat or slow. And we have to, in order to not run out of money, and that's what we're looking at as we build the 26, 27, that's the major concern. In order not to run out of money and spend all our fund balance and then not have any cash on hand to pay bills, we have to address that difference from the 125, what we're bringing in revenue to what we're spending. And in an environment where inflation continues to be up and there are things that are out, some things that are outside of the board's control.
It's interesting to me that this particular graphic, because what it does is it takes the, from the, the bigger model that we use, it takes the two lines and kind of pulls them out and highlights them. And even looking at this, I mean, we were 3 million ahead in 2022 and 2.6 behind 2022. So just 2022 and 2023 balanced out. In fact, we were collectively ahead, even after all of the, you know, pandemic and all that stuff. So this really, this highlights that this problem really sprang kind of out of nowhere to, to a degree in 2024. Because there really wasn't a problem going into 2024 from what this is showing in terms of spending and revenue balance. And, and what this isn't showing is how big the fund balance was.
Exactly.
So I mean, you know, even 2024 didn't look too dangerous given that we had the excess fund balance left over that we were trying to spend down in, in a measured way. But that flattening between 2024 and 2025 was not in anyone's radar. To my recollection.
And some of the expenses that are hitting.
And some expenses were not on our radar either because they hit us, yeah, externally. So it was a double whammy, creating what we're looking at. And the real problem is 2025 and that imbalance. I mean, going into 2025, to me, I would say we were not too out of shape.
And if the economy was in a different place, interest rates were lower, the housing market was, was moving faster, sales tax coming in stronger, a lot of the revenue streams that are coming in the county would be in a healthier spot. And look at the growth that we were seeing. So charting a course of growth is not, is not unrealistic or irresponsible. It's now upon us, when the team brought in 2024, to say, we have to start course correcting. And we understand that that's a hard dynamic when coming out of the uncertainty of the pandemic, there were a lot of different perspectives because of how things were moving. What we're seeing though is most other local economies, including the state, all communicating that they're adjusting and adjusting their expectations of revenue and they're having to adjust their expenses because things are, are more normalized now and are showing a ability to trend. And that's where, as a jurisdiction, we have to come into alignment with the other jurisdictions in how we're charting that course. And our commitment as we build the 26, 27 is to come back regularly so that if projections change, if there are economic factors that mean that we're realizing better outcomes, we'd love to come back and report that to the Commissioners to say, sales tax, property tax, et cetera, are performing much better and how we can adjust and be nimble in that approach.
Emphasis on love. We would love to come back and report that. Okay, so here is the graphic that you're accustomed to seeing with some slight differences. The key assumptions here are that there are two scenarios for 2025. The first, green on the left-hand side is projected fund balance based on the board adopted Amendment Two. Scenario two, which is the green indicator of fund balance on the right side, is projected fund balance based on Amendment Two inclusive of anticipated expenditure increases that are not currently reflected in the amendment or budget. The assumptions for 26 and beyond is there is a recalculation of minimum and target fund. of minimum and target fund balance thresholds to align with the updated financial outlook, keeping in mind that our minimum fund balance is equivalent of one month of operating costs. And currently, our target fund balance is two months of operating cost. So, as your expense budgets grow, those figures will change. Implementation of the public defense caseload standards, as was previously displayed by Public Defense and Patrick O'Connor on Slide Nine, impacting service delivery and the associated costs there. We've considered updated indirect service rate estimates for '26 and '27 to reflect those departmental increase in costs. There's also inclusion of ratified collective bargaining agreement impacts on personnel expenditures. Not just the ratified and adopted into the budget corrections contract for this year, but the ratified and not yet adopted into the budget patrol contract, but the variables in year two and three of both of those contracts and how they hit the budget. There's also an assumed average annual expenditure growth of approximately 6%. That's averaged over the five years. So, of course, the two years in our immediate future are a lot higher than that. Sales tax revenue variance estimated at 2% with a conservative projection of 1.5% growth in 2026. And cumulatively, revenue growth across all of our primary sources, property tax, sales tax, and all other taxes are projected at about 2%.
The blue line is the fund was a target.
That is the two-month fund balance.
Isn't that too high? I mean, like, 32? The numbers don't correlate with the.
The reason they're going up is because as our budget increases.
I just mean overall, like, isn't it not calibrated to the numbers on this side of the graph?
Well, it's calibrated to the numbers on the right side. So, fund balance is calibrated to the figures on the left side. The right side is showing where your fund balance minimum and I guess what we would wish to have two months is shown on the right side.
It's on the Z-axis.
Yeah, it's a double axis.
Yeah, but the numbers don't match. Like, 22 is at 40.
Oh, good catch.
32 is at 48. Like, that whole blue line should be down.
A little bit.
We're under for 2024.
Thank you for that.
Didn't notice that yesterday.
We did not notice that yesterday, but thank you. We have been playing with this model and trying to adjust because as the fund balance projections are varying, the graph gets a little bit out of sync because there's so many data points that it's considering and a little bit lower. You are correct, and thank you for that.
It's just important because just to show folks that, like, as of 2024, we were well above our fund target, you know, and they're like, so I mean, like, how rapidly this situation's evolved.
Most revision, thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so this is our current five-year projection. Again, it's the same budget drivers that we're taking into consideration. This shows you a red line with expenditure estimates and revenue estimates through the next five years, past this year. The deficit amount is at the bottom. And again, we're considering the CBAs, the internal service rate adjustments, the caseload standards, bless you, pending executive decisions, and then taking into consideration the financial assumptions and variances that we are looking at. And you can see here that it is showing a year-over-year increased deficit overspend, if you will, compared to the revenues that we're projecting coming in.
And obviously, in the out years, you know, projection is meant to show the direction things are headed, so the out years, it's out years. And the less, the less pinpointed those projections are.
So, the structural deficit that you identified as 16.6 is projected to become 30.7.
It is projected to grow.
In 2026.
Considering all of the assumptions that we have currently in the works, the contract, the two sheriff department or sheriff's office contracts, the internal service rates, the caseload standards, and then a couple of other items that are still pending adoption or finalization, I guess, of board decisions. And that does not include any of the other collective bargaining that's due for the other unions. It does include growth factors and salaries, benefits, and all of our different spending areas. Okay, so.
Were there any other questions on that?
Go back? No? So, our fund balance forecast year-end 2025, current modeling projects our general fund balance at year-end under three different scenarios currently. We have an optimistic estimate at 15.8 million, which is reflecting more favorable conditions but likely will not be realized. There's a realistic estimate that I'm leaning into, it's 13 million. It aligns with current expenditure and revenue trends. A pessimistic estimate of 10.6 million, which assumes continued pressures and limited corrective actions. We have additional considerations that the required monthly fund balance for 2025 remains estimated at 12 million. Revenue growth is not keeping pace with monthly expenditure demands, and that is adding to the structural imbalance. And in 2026, the estimated monthly fund balance needed to sustain our operations is currently projected at approximately 13 million. So, depending on where we end with our 2025 year-end fund balances, that figure can also increase by 1 to 2 million dollars.
And because of cash flow and cash demands, they're not, while we break them out into a 12-point year, 12 months, they don't hit regularly throughout the year. So, they come in at different points, which means part of managing that is keeping enough cash on hand to keep things moving. And if we go too far beneath that 13, in some of the months, we can get into a dangerously low or negative balance. That's not a place we want to be.
Thank you. This graphic is to illustrate for you the general fund percentage by office and department. So, and as of Amendment Two this year, our total general fund expenditure budget is $146 million. And that shows you each office and department, their percentage breakdown, the total of their amended budget, and then the beautiful pie chart.
Can I request?
Whoops.
Sorry, threw you off the game. Once we get into the budget conversation, what's all included in the non-departmental?
Okay, so this is essentially an exercise proposal for a reduction by percentage and to show you the actuals in 2022 through '24 on revenue expenditures, the difference, percent of overspend, and then in '25, '26, and '27, estimated revenues, expenditures difference, and a percentage of reduction, as well as the current estimated reversion for this year. What you're looking at is in 2025, the revenue forecast is projected to decline compared to 2024, and that's primarily due to elevated collections in the all-other revenue category in 2024. That category excludes property and sales tax, and it includes receipts such as investment earnings and operating transfers related to the ARPA FTE swap. Those two things were the largest contributors to the difference in revenue collection of over $4 million in '24 to '25. Additionally, when we look at 2025, property tax and sales tax collections are falling short compared to what our expectations are, and that is by about 1.6 million.
Any other question?
Not a question. I just want to be sure that I'm getting this information in the correct way. So, what you're saying is basically just the difference and just basically, it's $36 million.
Yep, I haven't gotten there yet.
2027.
Yeah, I'm talking about the '24 revenue and the '25 revenue. There, you know, I wanted to address preemptively if there were any questions on why the revenue's dropping $4 million.
I'm not even looking at it. I'm looking at towards the future.
Okay, so we'll.
Difference.
Yeah, we're looking at the difference.
And someone can walk us through why the, because I had the same questions about why the expenditures are anticipated to go from 148 to 164.
Sure, so the expenditure jump is due to the normal increases that we factor in year-over-year, right, and those would be things like a placeholder COLA, an increase to benefit costs, an increase to the services and supply lines, as well as internal service rates. There is also built into the '26 figure the first year of a five-year implementation schedule for the public defense caseload standards. There is also a placeholder for some critical needs for the county's ongoing budget and finance systems. There is also consideration for year two of the collective bargaining agreements that have been ratified, and there are some other executive session items that are still in the works. So, the figure for this particular year in 2026, the increase is roughly 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 13 million dollars. In 2027, it's the same items, and then there are some additional items for growth, right? We have all of these things that are stacked year-over-year that are adding to the general increased cost of business.
And again, what's making this extremely challenging, you look at '24, and we get to '25 on the revenue side, and we're projecting that in '27, we're not even quite at the '24 level again. So, '24 revenues, 129.5. '27 is 129.3. It's that revenue drag and even decrease is why we sounded the alarm in the fall of 2024. It's creating a lot of pressure absent the drivers like the caseload standards, like the new contracts, like some of the discussions we're having about implementation in the jail. And so, when we're looking at things that we're required to do, we're looking at additional funding sources, whether it's the HB 2015 or the opioid settlement dollars. How do we use those dollars to try to address our current demands and needs within the scope that that money is allowed for? Because what we don't want to do, and I think you said it really well, Chair, is you're looking at any additional costs or more positions that we potentially might have to affect. And that's, taking some of the other conversations aside about where fund balance is at, et cetera, when we look at the revenue and expenditures, that becomes a concern. We see our neighbor to the north, Pierce County, I believe just this week took 20 million out of reserves to help balance their budget. But their reserves are, I think, about 100-some or close to.
It's pretty significant.
Yeah. 100-plus million, maybe even more than that. We have a $4 million rainy day fund, I believe. We've been using our fund balance to help smooth out some of the uncertainties, rightfully so because we had a lot of one-time dollars. But now, as those dollars are committed and used, we don't have anywhere else to look. We don't, if we had a $150 million reserve fund, then we could say, let's use some of that to balance out '26, '27 because hopefully the economy comes back stronger. And in '28, '29, when we build that year budget, it'll be a different situation. If we had it, we would recommend using it for sure. But without that option, we're really faced with looking at what the difference is and planning for, which is, I believe, our responsibility. We have to plan for what is the scenario that could happen if things continue in the trend that they are indicated in the direction that they're going. If we don't do that, we could find ourselves scrambling in mid-year. The whole approach we took from December of '24 till now was to really unpackage this, to explain it, because it is a very dense topic. You can't just do in one session or wait till we're ready to approve the budget starting in October to December, and that is a very fast process. So, we're here looking at this dynamic, and rightfully so. It's caused our budget team, and of course, county leadership, concerned to say we need to make sure that this is in full focus for commissioners. Richard Fornier.
Thank you, Chair. The red flag was raised over a year ago. And, you know, so, you know, the concerns are the same. The issues are the same, they're just worse. We can't continue to use fund balance to fund our ongoing operations. And I don't have much hope for the economy, like, recovering in any kind of way that's going to help us. And I don't have much hope that there's going to be, you know, federal funds available to us, you know, in any significant way, or state funds available to us. So, like, I want, you know, or I would like to see some type of containment strategy for our expenses. Like, we need to implement something.
Yeah, and we're in agreement with you. We're looking at the build of '26, '27 as we speak. And it's those percentages that we're going to be working with to determine and obviously bring that back for consideration. But what does that mean to offices and departments? There are some areas within the general fund, departments and offices, that we have some considerations. One is the maintenance of effort level for the sheriff's deputy side, patrol side. And the other one, as we just heard from Patrick, public defense, obviously, they're driving some of these costs, but we have to increase them, not decrease them. So, with those two considerations, that's what we look to bring back to the board fairly quickly to have against a conversation of what would this look like? To the pie chart before this, would you see the overview of general fund expenses and how it's broken out?
I fear that even this horrible projection is still a rosy projection. Like, with the amount of uncertainty in the next two, three years, you know, like, it's, there's no telling how bleak this could get. But I do feel like it's going to be hard to stay ahead of this.
Yeah, in the out years, as some are mentioned, without considering new contracts with other employee groups and other considerations, we've taken the approach of trying not to throw a bunch of variables, just the variables we know. Because we don't want to be accused of creating such a pessimistic picture for some unknown, it wouldn't be a benefit to us, but creating it just to, you know, create a false direction where things are headed. So, we've really worked with the team to try to look at this. But there are things that could happen in the county that we just have to, we can't anticipate. In an environment where revenues are not coming back the way we would need them to to keep pace with our expenses, we are in a challenging situation.
Thank you. So, just to finish the highlights here, the 2025 reduction target is estimated to range between 3%, which is a reflection of the current anticipated reversion amount, up to 9% depending on final revenue performance and expenditure trends. Currently, if we were to maintain the 2.97 or 3% reversion, we would have healthy enough fund balance through the first four months of next year to continue operating and not run into a fund balance challenge. 2026, to meet month-over-month fund balance obligations, and I've ran this model several different times to see where we have a significant hole in the monthly fund balance needs. We are anticipating a significant reduction of about 25% of our total operating expenses. If we were to move forward with 24.7% coming off of the 164 million displayed there under 2026 and carry that forward into 2027. and sixty-four million displayed there under 2026, and carry that forward into 2027, it would change the expenditure forecast there to a hundred and forty-one point seven million dollars. That would still necessitate a twelve-and-a-half million or nine point two percent reduction in 2027. If we don't, then we're running into a negative fund balance scenario again at the end of the year, which we cannot do. So trying to take a very, taking a conservative approach on how much the board needs to consider to reduce in expenditures while also not creating a overly pessimistic outlook, as the county manager referenced. You know, we know that there are other considerations that the board will need to make decisions on, like the other contracts that are up for negotiations. We have only built into this model the must-dos currently on our radars.
I haven't heard you mention the road fund issue. Is that in here, out of there?
This is continuing to do a levy shift in the roads.
Same amount.
And the diversion, yeah.
Which will be in a separate presentation, because at that rate, our public works director, Karen Leese, has alerted us that in the out years, they are experiencing a shortfall, and we'll have to make some adjustments there.
So, let's see. Primary objectives for the general fund's financial strategy includes aligning the expenditures with projected revenues so that we can achieve a balanced budget, developing a sustainable revenue framework to support essential services, addressing rising operational costs, and introducing new revenue sources. To meet these goals, targeted budget reductions will be necessary. These adjustments aim to eliminate reliance on fund balance reserves for ongoing expenditures, thereby reinforcing long-term fiscal stability and resilience for the county. We are requesting the following actions, that the board make a motion to approve the revised 26, 27 budget development calendar incorporating amendments related to the 25 fiscal year. Also, my apologies for not including this, delegating authority to the county manager to accept any further revisions needed through the duration of this year with notification to the board. That's incredibly important right now, as we are continuing to work through some challenges with the budget system. Hopefully, everything is great, but we might need that to pivot quickly. And then, next step, the budget team will return with an overview of how budget reductions will impact departments and offices, and I believe our target is next week.
If we can swing it, it's a lot of work, but we're trying to get this information quickly so we can make some decisions. Summer, in the out-year forecast, do we have the number built in? I know, of course, it's still being worked on with the team and the sponsor group for Ultimate TC Connect fix.
I do have that built in, yes.
So that'll be a separate presentation that we come and talk to everyone about regarding what we need to do to shore up TC Connect so that the organization has a functional accounting system, and I want to give a special thanks to our sponsor group and Jeff Walker for leading that discussion. Commissioner Grant.
Uh, hold on. Hey, so I just wanted to kind of pop in here, as I know that you guys are going to continue this conversation. I have to speak at the Resource Hub in about five minutes, and so I'm going to have to pop off. I would say, I guess, these are the things that I want to say. You know, I, listening to Commissioner Fornier, you know, talking about containment, I think that, you know, yes, that is part of the solution, but, I mean, I think for me, you know, this just really emphasizes the fact that we need to make decisions on, on some revenue. And, you know, for me, I think that, you know, making some councilmatic decisions on revenue might help us a little bit getting through some of these things. I just want to mention that. The other thing that, for me, that I want to mention is that, that slide, the last, there was a slide, the one that Carolina said, you know, oh, my gosh, I'm looking at that huge number, and it's making me nervous, that thirty-six million dollar deficit, that one. Yeah, you know, I, for me, it's really important, I appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate, I think you guys are doing a great job on these presentations, but they're so high-level, it's really hard for me to be able to feel like I'm making an informed decision. When I'm, when, what I would be really interested in seeing is, you know, year after each of those years, you're showing the COLA increases, like, each of those projections that you're putting into the twenty, like, when we look at six million, then it goes to twenty-three million in 25, and then thirty-six million in 2026. Each of those are line item projections that you guys are using, and if we had those broken out, that would help us to be able to make decisions about the revenue if we were going to do a councilmatic thing, you know, because maybe the COLAs are at, within the sheriff's office, and those could be, you know, if we were to increase the sales tax, then we would be able to, you know, for, you know, the, if we were to use House Bill 2015, that would take care of that line item. And so that's what I'm really, you know, feeling like I'm missing as far as being able to make, you know, good decisions, is that I'm only seeing these high-level numbers and not able to really look at across the board where our expenditures increasing as we go year by year, and what kind of decisions can we, as the commissioners, make, you know, in our decision-making that will help each of those different bucketed items? And so that's all I was going to say. I would be, the last thing I'll say is, I'd be abstaining on any action today, because I didn't receive this updated budget calendar until nine fifty-seven, right before this meeting, and I haven't had a chance to review it. And so, you know, I wouldn't be, I would have to abstain on any motions today as well. So just, that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Grant, I believe the budget calendar was emailed several days ago, last week. I emailed, it's the same one that I emailed out, and then I think that Summer emailed it out too, like, within the same day.
Okay, it hasn't had any changes to that since, because we get, we got new ones that just came in right before the meeting started.
Yeah, and thank you for clarifying that. We sent out the email this morning so that those of you that were online wouldn't, we knew you wouldn't have the print copies available, just to make it easy that it was at the top of your email. But to answer your question, from the time that Summer and I sent them out, there have been no additional changes.
Okay, thank you. That does help, that just gets confusing, okay.
Yeah, and we will definitely round up on your question to get you an overview of what's driving those numbers up. I think that's a great question, and we'll make sure we share it with the entire board, like a breakout of the specific numbers.
All right, great, thank you.
Commissioner, here your motion.
Yes, sir. I would move to approve the revised 2026, 2027 budget development calendar incorporating amendments related to the 2025 fiscal year.
And then, one of the things that Summer's asking, can authorize the county manager to make additional changes to the calendar if needed after an update to the board has gone public? Do you want to include that element?
Yeah.
Second motion. Any discussion on the motion regarding the budget calendar? If you're now calling for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Commissioner Grant, you're still abstaining?
All right, sorry. Yep, yeah, I'm gonna abstain, thank you.
Okay, I heard three ayes and one abstaining, so that motion passes. Anything else this morning on the budget item? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to commissioner item. The first one is proposed letter to Commerce regarding encament resolution program funding. This has been sent out. It looks like sort of a thank you for the, for the listening and adapting to the requests of our community. I'm in support of what's proposed here. Does anybody have any concern about me signing and sending it to the other mayors?
No, I think that's good.
Okay. Commissioner Fornier? Commissioner Grant?
No, it's fine.
Okay, so we have a majority of support for, and I'll sign this letter. Yep, and our.
Wayne did a thumbs up.
Okay, great. And our budget, I mean, our communications manager is reaching out to the cities of Lacey and Olympia to coordinate a story about the working to get this accomplished commerce. Okay, very good. The last item is commissioner's shared goal priorities, and Commissioner Klaus asked if we could postpone this for a week, she wanted to be here for the discussion, just had some questions, and so I'm supportive of that, and since we're almost out of time, anybody have concern about moving item two to next week?
Do we need a motion for that, since it was on the agenda?
I'll move to put item two under sub four, to, sub two under item four, to next week's commissioner's check-in or work session.
Second.
Okay. Discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thumbs up from Commissioner Fornier. I'm going to call that a unanimous agreement on that. That's the end of the agenda, are there any other commissioner items? Commissioner Mikiya?
So I just wanted to go ahead, and I'm not sure if you all saw, we have to submit our voting for timber counties, and the chair has to sign it. So I, that's why I kind of wanted to bring it up. There is only one person writing. Basically, each one gets a vote, so the vote can be fractionalized, and so just kind of wanted to bring that up to see which way. I am using my vote for a write-in, and that is Commissioner Mensah, he's objecting to my vote, but he can't.
Can't stop you.
He can't stop me. So just wanted to see, like, where everyone was, just so we can fill it out and send it.
I haven't had a chance to review it.
Okay, so I have to submit a vote today for the Board of Natural Resources member for WAC, and I guess, since there's one candidate, I will be submitting, unless I hear differently from any of you, I will be submitting eight tenths of a vote for the candidate and two tenths of a vote for writing in me, based on Commissioner Mikiya's vote.
Yeah, and then, I, that's fine.
If you feel like you want to do anything different, just let me know by the end of the day.
Sounds, sounds good to me.
All right, thanks, Commissioner Grant. Any, any other discussion on that item? Okay, then we are adjourned. Do you have one more?
No.